If you can just silence your cell phones if you're here in the audience. We do have a quorum present, but we have two of our commissioners that are missing this evening, appearing virtually via telephone because they are out of the jurisdiction. They're able to do this two times a year if they are ill or outside the jurisdiction. Both Commissioner Whitlock and Commissioner Rickman are both outside this jurisdiction and have not appeared this manner more than two times this year. So they will be joining us virtually. We have several matters on the land use public hearing to address. I do just want to make an announcement that if you do want to address the commission, you do need to fill out a form and turn it into Ms. Turner, whatever it may be on, if it's not on one of our land use public hearing items. Mr. Hamilton, I'll let you start off with number one.
Okay, we'll now begin our land use public hearing portion of the meeting. We have six items of business scheduled for public hearings tonight. We will call each of these items in turn. We'll begin with a brief staff report and recommendation from the planning commission, and following from that, we will open the public hearing. First, we will call for those wishing to speak in favor of each item. We'll ask that you give your name and address for the record. Come up here to the podium, and you will have up to 10 minutes to speak. There is a timer on the screen. When you see that timer read zero, we ask that you kindly wrap up your thoughts. Following from those wishing to speak in favor, we will then call for those wishing to speak in opposition to each item. Each of those wishing to speak in opposition, we ask follow the same format. Again, you will have up to 10 minutes to speak. Following from that, at the pleasure of the Board of Commissioners, a three-minute rebuttal can be provided to any applicant for any of these land use items. Are there any questions about how this public hearing will commence? Okay, all right. With that being said, we will begin with item number one, which is a conditional use request from Dana Horton, 692 Crawford Circle, Tacoa, parcel 051C057. The property is currently zoned as residential single, and the proposed action to be taken is to grant a conditional use permit to allow for show stock on the property. Recommendation from the planning commission is to approve the request as submitted. Are there any questions or comments from the Board of Commissioners? Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this item? Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
If you'll just come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Dana Horton, 692 Crawford Circle, Tacoa.
Thank you.
Just make this really quick. The pigs have been on our property since early May. The complaint was filed by someone not located anywhere near our property. It was just a more of a civil matter. All of our neighbors are happy for the girls to be showing these animals. They're well taken care of. They're walked, washed, well cared for daily. It's a great experience for the children. We have someone who hauls off the manure weekly, and there has not been any complaints from the neighbors. So I would just like to hopefully have y'all approve that.
Thank you, Ms. Horton.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this item? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this item? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? The land use public hearing for item number one is closed. Item number two is a conditional use request from Dusty Vincent, 3231 Highway 145, East and Alley, parcel 055017. The property is currently zoned as residential single. The proposed action to be taken is to grant a conditional use permit to allow for a satellite storage area for a business. Recommendation from the planning commission is to provide temporary approval through December 31st, 2026. Temporary approval is contingent upon establishing a screening fence around the area in which the vehicles are required to be stored. The property owner would work with the marshal's office for a permanent storage solution in an area zone specifically for commercial purposes, such as the main location of the business. Are there any questions or comments from the Board of Commissioners?
What happens after the ending date, the sunset there?
The property owner would have been required to move those items.
Are they aware of that?
They would be, yes, sir.
They didn't have any questions or concerns about that?
That...
For the planning commission?
Not as far as I'm aware, no. There was no discussion at the planning commission meeting. Any other questions or comments from the Board of Commissioners? All right, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this request?
My parents, I just got back from Gainesville with my mom, so she had to go to the doctor's office.
Yeah, we got the correspondence.
Running on the wire.
Thank you.
Anyway, my name's Teresa Vincent. I represent WW Customs, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight regarding our request for the permit. We have already met with the zoning board, and we appreciate their time and thoughtful recommendation. As suggested, we are willing to relocate the storage lot to our main facility by December 31st of '26. I respectfully ask that you approve that timeline tonight as well. However, in addition to this extension, I am requesting that we reconvene in July of '26 to reevaluate the situation. At that time, we can consider any updates to the zoning code, changes in community sentiment, or new business activity in the area. Our goal is to eventually secure a permanent conditional use permit if it continues to make sense for the community and for our county's development. Now, I'd like to address the broader concern that brings us here. Chapter 34 of the Code of Ordinances defines what constitutes a nuisance, but as it stands, enforcement of this code is largely complaint-based and subjective. That creates a system where anyone's personal opinion or aesthetic preferences can trigger consequences for another property owner. Georgia State Regulation states that a complaint should not be fanciful or based on the taste of someone overly particular. It should be based on what would disturb a reasonable person. Unfortunately, our county seems to have extended this definition to empower individual preferences over what is reasonable. What one person may see as rust, I see as history. While my neighbor may see scrap metal, I see opportunity, restoration, legacy, and value. I don't criticize his overgrown grass or cluttered driveway. We simply have different standards, and I respect that. It's unfortunate that instead of focusing on his own property, he's chosen to scrutinize mine. That kind of energy doesn't build communities, it divides them. The intent of this ordinance, as I understand it, was to address true hazards, cases of hoarding or neglect that threaten safety or public health. It was never meant to stifle entrepreneurship, creativity, or a personal vision, and yet that's exactly what happens when the ordinance is interpreted based on opinion instead of reason. We've proudly operated WW Customs for over 10 years right here in Stevens County. We've invested time, sweat, and care into our business, yet our growth is now being limited, not by actual problems, but by assumptions about hypothetical future businesses that don't even exist yet. Instead of focusing on a business that might one day come to the area, I invite you to look at what we bring in now, clients from across the region and even out of state. There are people who visit Tacoa for our classic cars, and they spend money here on lodging, food, gas, and more. That's real economic activity. That's real growth. They say the concern has set in a precedent, but I ask, what precedent are we setting when we hinder local business owners in favor of future possibilities that may never materialize? This isn't just about cars or complaints. It's about how we treat our own. We are part of the very fabric of this community, just like many other residents who may not conform to a new aesthetic standard. What about property owners with land hidden from public view? Are they exempt simply because no one can see their belongings? Is the problem truly property, or is it the visibility? We all want a beautiful, welcoming Stevens County, but beauty looks different to different people. A collector of yard art, vintage items, or classic cars deserves the same respect as anyone else who takes pride in their property. That's why we need to move away from a complaint-driven, opinion-based model and adopt standards rooted in reason and fairness. As I shared with the zoning committee, our property is maintained with care. The grass is mowed, weeds are managed, and even flowers are planted throughout. We are not operating in neglect. We're operating with pride and purpose. So tonight, I respectfully ask the Board to approve the recommended extension of our permit through December 31st of '26. I also ask that we revisit the matter in July of '26 with the hope of making the permit permanent based on the facts, the conditions, and the values that matter most. Thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I appreciate your perspective. I would just, my only comment would be that I don't make decisions from my seat based on whether people are for or against something. So I agree with you on your perspective as far as what one person sees as an antique, maybe somebody sees as junk. So that said, I look at this, I look at every situation uniquely, and I think from my seat right now that this request skates around the issue of creating a spot zoning attempt. So because of where the location is, I could care less if you had 1,000 cars out there. I drive by that every day going to church, or every week going to church, and I agree with you, it's kept up really well. My concern is for the spot zoning that it would create from a commercial use, not from... I've had several situations over the last two and a half years where I've had, you know, a multitude of people be passionate about something, and I've voted a different way. So I never look at who's in favor or who's against. I look at the zoning that we have in front of us. So if 1,000 people came in here and they were for it, and I look at from my perspective that it creates a spot zoning, then even though that would be unpopular for me to do so, I'm going to go with the current zoning. I do like the idea of looking at the land use that we have. That's something that this current board, current administration, has been aggressive in doing since, I guess, two and a half years ago, since we've all been in. And now Craig has jumped in here with us, and he's aligned with the aspect of looking at our current zoning and land use and see how it impacts our community. We want it to impact in a positive way. And so I appreciate that perspective as well. And we're continuing to work on land use and the things that need to come out of it, the things that maybe need to be added to it. I'm more or less, I said when I ran, I wanted to turn it into a book of Cliff Notes instead of encyclopedia, and we've done some of those things, but we've got a lot more work to do, and it's not going to be just a four-year period where that active board takes that approach. It's going to take a while. Nothing was changed, not much was changed, I should say. I don't want to generalize it, but not much was changed in that land use document from the time of its inception in 2014 until this current board started...
I've seen a lot of the changes y'all have made, and they are going along pretty well.
Yes, ma'am.
You have.
So...
Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Blessings to your family, too, as they're in the hospital.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this item?
Hey, how are you?
Dusty Vincent, 1123 Rock Creek Road. My mom lives at that property. When me and mom moved back, my dad had passed away, and me and mom wanted to move back home. And if I had to do it over, I would have never lost that property. I would, y'all made me feel very unwelcome.
I would, and I'm going to caution everybody...
I know that this has been very...
Hold on just a second. I'm going to caution everybody. Address us.
Yes, ma'am.
I do not want to see anyone speaking to anyone in the audience, and that goes for everybody. Address us.
Yes, ma'am. But I like what you had to say, and I know that y'all are working with it, and I know everybody's perspective is different. All I'm hoping y'all will do is give us time, and we'll do what we said we'll do. We'll do it. And it's just me, my mom, and my wife, and we do. We work hard, and we try. We really try. But I hope you will, whatever he's come up with, I hope you'll... I'm very, very nervous, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Thank y'all. Thanks for speaking.
Thank you.
Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this item?
Hey.
Hey.
I'm Karen Vincent. I live at 3231. I'm the one that lives there.
Yes, ma'am.
So I look at the cars every day. I love them. I'm sorry, but I do. And it gives me a reason to get up every morning to take care of the cars, because like my son said, my husband passed away, and I felt like giving up. I've got my two sons. They keep me going, but it's not like they're right there to make me say, "You got to get up every morning and do something." So the cars mean a lot to me. They don't bring in mosquitoes like what has been mentioned, because there's no water stands in them. But I'm going to mention one thing. There's an old house sitting right beside me. You can't even see it anymore because it's grown up so bad. They used to own it, and I didn't complain because I wasn't raised like that to turn somebody into a law. I wasn't raised that way. And a lot of the other neighbors around here is the same way. You know, they said they had no issue. They wouldn't turn me in. And they was approached to turn me in, and they said they weren't going to do it because they don't believe in it. They want to be a good neighbor. I want to be a good neighbor. And, you know, we are going to plant trees. We're going to put up a fence and cameras and stuff, and it will be kept maintained if y'all just please just give us the time to let us do it.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this item?
Hello, my name is Gary Bates. Me and my wife have a business right beside WW Customs, and they do keep their place really, really clean. We buy antique cars from them, parts from them, and my wife goes all over the world. We have a tire shop there. We do auto restoration. We do mechanic work, do all kinds of work. And we're talking about old antique cars around here. A lot of people in this county love their cars. They have them in their basements tucked completely apart. It was their kid's car that died in Vietnam. You know, they have cars from 1920s. 1908 Henry Ford started Fords, all the 60s and 70s. You know, that old Chevrolet place down here is full of antique cars. The old Ford place over here is full of antique cars. If y'all remember, the old Dodge Chrysler place over on the old side town is full of antique cars. People love their cars, you know? They're great people. They keep the place really neat and really clean. Kids come down there, a lot of adults come down there, look at those little cars, and they're so fascinated. They come up to our place. We work on them, do auto restoration, too. We've got three cars up there, 1924 Ford truck, 1956 Bel Air, 1967 Firebird. And they come up there, and they're just so fascinated. Look at those cars, pieces, parts, no matter where it's together, whether it's a $50,000 car or a $2,000 car, they love it. And my wife, we travel all over the United States bringing back parts, and we do a lot of trading with them. They sell a lot of stuff, and they bought several cars, me and my wife, over the years, probably 50 to 100. And they just need somewhere to store their stuff, what they're trying to get that land permit for, so they can continue to sell the stuff, the parts and stuff, you know? They're really trying hard. I see them out there, and it's been 90s to 100 degrees every day. I see Dusty out there with that roll back till he's about to fall over dead, soaking wet with sweat, you know? And his wife, his mom, mowing that grass, and it's hot down there, man. And we're right next door. If we didn't have awnings up there, the sun would just totally bake us. I really thank a lot of these people. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this item? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this item?
Good evening, Board. My name is Eric Addison. I own 3251 Highway 145. It's the house my parents live in. Well, I have nothing against the Vincents or anything that they want to do with their business. I just don't want it in show of my parents' front porch. My parents are the only ones that live around there that actually see full-time, 100% these hulks. You can call them vintage cars. You can call them whatever you want to. I mean, I guess I could throw a bunch of hubcaps out in the yard and call it a vintage car, because none of these cars work. None of them are drivable. And yeah, you got to have something to start with to create a vintage car, but they have a place on Highway 17. They have a place also 3.1 miles away at the Corner Holiness Church Road in Rock Creek that, to me, is... I'm a logistics guy. It makes a lot more sense moving cars in and out because it would save you on fuel costs and transportation time and everything else than trying to do it 15, 20 minutes, 20 minutes away down East and Alley, Tom's Creek. Now, I'm passionate about it. Yeah, I got a history of that place because since 1930, my family owned the entire place. It used to be an 80 cow dairy farm. It was kept in pristine condition. And little by little, the family, for whatever reason, sold it off, and they were fortunate to be able to get my aunt's old home and the small piece of property that went with it. And the house they're talking about was my grandmother's. And yeah, it needs to be torn down. But I sold that house and the property that went on to a person who said that they were either going to restore it or tear it down. That was six months ago. All right? So I'm going to hold her to her word that she's, that's what she's going to do. So, you know, I understand it's a problem. I don't like it any more than they do, but it's not my problem anymore. All right? I don't own it. As far as ordinances go, what ordinances are we going to enforce and which ones are we not? That's what I want to know. Because they're in violation of the ordinance, and then all of a sudden they want a zone change, you know, to be not in violation of the ordinance. And as far as going to neighbors, I haven't talked to any neighbor but myself. I just don't like it, and I'm using my power to speak in front of my Board of Commissioners and voice those concerns. It does bring, it is a nuisance. They collect water, which creates flies and mosquitoes. There's places for snakes and rats. So if you're already in violation of an ordinance, shouldn't you not be in violation of an ordinance before a zone change is even considered? Shouldn't you be obeying the rules first? Because as is, they're not. Now, in 2016, under another marshal, they were made to move the cars, and little by little, they came back. Currently, in this environment, the marshal has given them initially 30 days, then 90 days, and then zoning change, and now we're here in front of you guys. I don't know that I'm going to feel any differently in July. My property value is probably going to go down because of it. The nuisance factor will still be there, and I would like to know what is my recourse if they don't build a fence or they don't plant trees? What do I do then? Do I bring, come back up here to this body and ask for some kind of recourse or whatever? I don't have time for all that. I've got a life, and so do the Vincents. Okay? I just wish that people would take care of their stuff as much as everybody else in the county. And if you go up from 145 to Tacoa, there's a lot of things that are unsightly, but I don't have to see those every day. My parents, who are 75 years old, have to wake up every morning for whatever few remaining years they have and look at junk cars where there used to be cows. And that's upsetting to them, especially my father. My father still holds that land dear, even though he doesn't own it. It's the memories that he remembers. He remembers how pristine the land used to be, the joy of waking up and milking 80 cows twice a day, doing hay, silage. It was, tells me all the time, I had a Mayberry upbringing in Tom's Creek, and little by little, that's going away. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to this item? Is there anyone wishing to speak?
My name is Sherry Jeffers. I live at 126 Holiness Church Road in Tacoa, and I'm a property owner and also an investor here in Tacoa, Stevens County. I have handed you what I believe is the license for WW Custom Cars. I did a little bit of digging, and it looks like that, first of all, they had a, they were a used car dealer, and then in 2022, September 13th of 2022, they became a used car parts dealer. So it appears that their business, and I believe also from Mr. Vincent, I listened to his planning, he said that Tacoa Automall came in, and Sandy Keener came in, and so they switched their business from used cars to used car parts. And so from the research that I've done, as far as the business plan, if you're going to go into like a used car parts business, you really need more than a half acre of land. You need more like two, three, 10 acres. So whereas used cars, each car may be worth $20,000, $30,000, used car parts, not so much, and you would need a lot more area for engines, this, that, whatever, to be able to make a go of it. I think as you look at all the residential properties surrounding them, the residential property owners are also investors. Most of us, our home is probably the biggest real estate investment any of us will ever make. And so personally, you know, I live off of, I want to hand you this as well, I live off of Holiness Church Road, and this first page is off of their website. And as you flip, I just took these off Q Public. They're just Q Public screenshots. The first one shows the ownership of the KK Custom as Wayland Watkins, Teresa Harris, which is Teresa Vincent, and A Dover, and that's the Highway 17. The next one shows the property that's on my road, and you can see numerous vehicles on that Q Public as well. That is zoned residential. The next page is another residential on Rock Creek, and then another residential on Highway 145, all of those overflowing with cars. Now, I moved here in 2021. I did not write these ordinances. These ordinances, it's my understanding, were written in 2014, and we've all had quite a bit of years to work through the zoning. So according to what I understand, what is your opinion of where an automotive salvage yard? What would that be zoned? Would that be zoned commercial general? Would that be zoned commercial industrial? What would that be zoned?
I would typically think it would be commercial of some sort.
Okay. So basically, what you're allowing, if this variance goes through, is you're allowing commercial in the backyard of a resident. And to me, that, you know, we've got real estate people looking, we've got other people looking to move to Stevens County. If you allow a commercial salvage yard in someone's backyard, you going to allow a boatyard next? Are you going to allow a business of, you know, somebody wants to fix lawn mowers? I mean, where does it stop? The whole purpose of having a land use ordinance is where it protects everybody's investment. When I move here and I buy a piece of residential land, I assume that I'm going to have some protections in that. In your residential zoning, I'd like to read that. It's designed for homes, families, peaceful living. It says in your own, I've got it here somewhere, in your own language, basically, that we, "All single-family residential developments shall conform to the above open space. These regulations are designed to promote the health, safety, order, aesthetics, and general welfare by protecting against incompatible uses with the land." That's right there in there. "Controlling problems of flooding, soil erosion, and air pollution." You know, what about leakage of fluids from all kinds of automobiles that go into the ground? "Provide for a more attractive environment, assuring adequate open space, reducing noise, night lighting, glare, odor, objectionable view, loss of privacy, and other adverse impacts and nuisances." So to me, then you also, and so that's just your land use part, you would be allowing a commercial on a residential... a commercial on a residential property. Then, under your nuisances, you have conditions conducive to excessive breeding of flies, mosquitoes, or other insects in relation to surrounding conditions, accumulation of rubbish, trash, garbage, refuse, junk. And I'm not saying these things don't have value. They obviously have value. I have dear, dear friends that collect cars, that are classic car. I wish them well in their business. I just would like their business to all be consolidated. I don't want it moving on my residential road. And I would like what's there to be consolidated with their other business and be put in a commercial area where it is appropriately zoned. And even with our state laws, the state of Georgia even has, under the definition of junkyard, any establishment maintained for storing, buying, selling junk, or for an automotive graveyard. And the terms shall include garbage dump, sanitary fills, or scrap processor. So they, in the state of Georgia, in their own rules and definitions, they also even require screening from any state-funded road or main highway. They require that, and that is in state law. So to me, even, even the Highway 17 should be screened. That should be screened for, that is our entrance into our community. And I think it's a great business. I wish them well in their business. But I think it's something that, you know, it's, we all need a toilet in our house, but we don't put our toilet in our foyer. You know? There's things that we need in our homes, there's things that we need, but there's proper placement for things. So I think the messages that you're sending, if you approve this, is that our zoning ordinances have little or no value to residential investors in our area. I think it also says, if you're made to move something with the past, Marshal, forget it. You know, we got new commissioners now, we got a new marshal, try it again, go for it. To me, it rewards people who are not following the rules. If I got a speeding ticket, the first time I might ask for grace. The second time, I think I'd probably expect a ticket. I think if, if you allow this, you're favoring a business investment over a residential investment. And all of us that live here, our homes are expensive. I mean, homes now are $300,000. People can barely even afford a home. So they surely don't want something objectionable that they think that somebody's going to come and put something in the backyard right beside them. This business isn't sharing their profits with their neighbors. But are the neighbors expected to share in the cost or the storage of looking at all those vehicles? Rodents, insects, fluids on the groundwater? I just want our commissioners to consistently and fairly stick to what we have, stick to the zoning, stick to the plan, and follow the guidelines. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Jeffers.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to this item? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
I'll afford the Vincents rebuttal, should they want to. I'm sorry? That's what I just granted you. Yes. It's okay.
I just want to clarify that we do have a used car license and a used parts license. So we have both.
I saw that they're both still in.
They're both still in effect.
Yes.
Yes.
One, I think expires in 2026, the other one 25. So they're both, I saw that.
Yes, ma'am. And also, Ms. Jeffers, when she speaks of her property is.
We're not again.
Oh, I didn't, okay.
Okay.
I wasn't speaking against her, I'm just saying, her property is next door to my mom and dad's.
Okay.
And I, I don't know. I think partially the reason that she has targeted me is because she has a complaint against herself from me. She has debris on her own property, on her 500 acres that she owns. She has debris there within three feet of my brother's back door. So I feel like, again, the land use allows complaint-based, opinionated things. She turned my brother in for debris that was on her own property, saying it was his debris, when even the marshal, I talked to him about it, and he knows it was long there before my brother ever purchased the property. So she's just going around trying to.
So do you want to use your rebuttal to talk about this?
No, 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 I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I got off schedule. I just want to clarify that.
Okay.
And there's no mosquitoes down there because most of those don't, you know, they have rust holes in them, water leaks out, most don't have motors, transmissions, no oil on the ground.
They're at my house.
They're at your house. I'll be sure not to come visit.
Yeah.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Okay, the Land Use Public Hearing for item number two is closed. Item number three is a variance request from Richard Abbott, 1243 Ridgemore Drive, Tacoa, parcel 063F014B. The property is currently zoned as residential single. The proposed action to be taken is to grant a variance of nine feet for a total one foot left side yard setback. Recommendation from the Planning Commission is to approve as requested. Any questions or comments on the Board of Commissioners? Okay. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this item?
My name is Rick Abbott, I live at 1243 Ridgemore Drive. Simply put, I think my request is self-explanatory, but, but I understand there's a 10-foot variance from the property line to a built structure in residential. If you've seen those lots, and I know you have, they're, they're long, which is really nice because there's no road noise, and you can't even see the house from the road, to be honest. But they're so narrow, like they're so narrow, the only way I can build that garage is if the house is here, road's out here, I want to build it at 90 degrees. And if, if the variance isn't approved, then I can't even build the garage. Because, because if it's approved at one foot off the property line, it's going to give me, I think, 19 feet in the garage, I got to take another foot off just for the structure of the garage, of the front, the back. And the car will fit with roughly 11 to 12 inches in the front, 11, 12 inches in the rear when you pull it, pull it in the garage. And it's not a huge vehicle. Anyway, so it's, it's kind of, if I get it approved, I'll get the garage built. If I don't get it approved, to be honest, you know, I, I knew that when I bought the house, right? I knew that when I bought the house. I didn't realize the ordinance, though, when I bought the house, but I, but I understand it, and clearly I'll abide by it if, if not approved. But I am requesting approval. I did speak with the adjoining property owner, who is Scott Stroud, who is, who oversees the, I think it's the Planning Commission for Stevens County. He's totally fine with it as long as that one foot means the concrete foundation is one foot away. And if there's an eve up top, I don't even know if there's going to be an eve, to be honest. I doubt there even will be one, but if there is one, you know, from the top, it won't go over the one foot. That was his request to me, so I'll respectfully make sure it doesn't go over, realizing that, that if it does, and he complains, I may have to take the garage down. So, so that won't happen. But simply put, that's my request. I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
And as you stated, you're willing to honor your neighbor's request, correct?
Absolutely.
Gable and Alden.
Absolutely. I don't even know if there's going to, they're probably won't, I don't even see the point in putting an eve on the backside, so, so I doubt I'm even going to have one out there. And I don't even know fully what the garage is going to look like because the bids that I'm getting from builders are so ridiculous that, that at this point, I don't have a builder that I would even hire to put the garage in place. I'm hoping to find one, but to tell me that it's going to be for a two-car garage will be $200,000, that, I'll put my hand on your shoulder and tell you, thanks for coming by, but that's never going to happen. So.
But bottom line, you need nine feet.
Bottom line, I need nine feet.
Okay.
Well, that's it. Thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this item? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this item?
We are on number three, which is 1243 Ridgemore Drive. Okay. Which number? What is your address?
That's in the city limits.
So this is, this, are you here to talk about taxes? Okay, that would be at the end of the meeting, and you would need to fill out a form.
Samantha will help you.
All right, we will proceed. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this item? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? All right, the Land Use Public Hearing for item number three is closed. Item number four is a variance request from Karen Holcomb, 369 Isbell Road Extension, Easton Alley, parcel 054A070. The property is currently zoned as residential single. The proposed action to be taken is to grant a variance to allow for a second principal use on a property under two acres. Recommendation from the Planning Commission is to approve as requested. Any questions or comments on the Board of Commissioners? Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this item?
My name is Arlen Holcomb. That's Karen over there. All we are asking for is to put a second residence behind our residence, and we have, we're 10 to 12 hundredths of an acre short of two acres. But that's all we're asking. The neighbors, none of them have a problem with it. The backside is cows, they don't care at all. And approve it. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this item? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this item? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? All right, the Land Use Public Hearing for item number four is closed. Item number five is a rezoning request from Verbena Roots Properties Incorporated for Memorial Drive and 558 Meadowbrook Drive, Easton Alley, parcels 043117 and 043100. Properties are currently zoned as agricultural residential. The proposed action to be taken is to rezone the subject properties to residential single for residential purposes. Recommendation from the Planning Commission is to approve as requested. Any questions or comments on the Board of Commissioners? Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this item?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Hugh Champion. I live at 1352 Davis Road. I've gotten soil tests done on this place, and the allowance to 100 feet of the road gives me more options as far as how to break the property up. So that's why the request is in.
Pretty straightforward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Champion.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the item? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the item? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? The Land Use Public Hearing for item number five is closed. Item number six is a conditional use request from Champion Legacy Resources LLC, 4534 Highway 17, Southeaston Alley, parcel 043145. Property is currently zoned as commercial general. The proposed action to be taken is to grant a conditional use permit to utilize the property as a self-storage facility. Recommendation from the Planning Commission is to approve as requested. Any questions or comments on the Board of Commissioners? You? Should have stayed up.
This property is next to my office, where my business is. We bought this property several years ago and have just played around with different ideas how to best utilize it. And we've landed on this. And so we've, we've spent some money on plans going forward, so I appreciate your consideration on this as well.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this item? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the item? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? The Land Use Public Hearing for item number six is closed.
Thank you. All right, we will get started with our regular meeting. Thank you all for being here this evening. Mr. Teasley, you are up. If everyone will rise, we will have a prayer and do the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr.
Oh, wise and powerful God, we come this afternoon thanking you for everything you do for us, Lord. Thank you for allowing us to have a county and a city that we are able to come and discuss the business of the city and don't have to worry about fighting about it, dear God. There are some places right now, dear God, that they are bombing and going on, but you allowed us to be here at DeCoe, Georgia, a beautiful place, oh Father God. Now, Lord, we just ask that you bless this Board of Commissioners. We pray that you give them wisdom and give them understanding to do the work of this board need to do, dear Lord. We pray that you bless the staff and bless all the people that live here at DeCoe that came out this afternoon to stake their business, oh Father God. Lord, we'll be very careful that no matter what, you get the praise, you get the honor, and you get every bit of the glory, for it's in the mighty name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and God, and deliver to all.
I hope she was standing.
No, I think I got everybody. Yeah, everybody here, everybody's here. Okay. Are there any additions to the agenda this evening? 2:30 even. You have a motion to approve the agenda without addition under invoices and quotes over 10K.
Motion to approve the agenda with the addition.
For people listening from home, do you want to explain that quote?
We'll get to it when we get to it.
Okay, all right, gotcha.
Thank you, Debbie. We got a motion in a second. All those in favor of approving the agenda with the addition, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. Any corrections or additions to the minutes provided? Okay. You have a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We'll move on to new business with item number one.
Item number one of new business is a conditional use request from Dana Horton, as discussed in the public hearing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion by the commissioners? If not, all those in favor of a motion to approve, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion's approved.
Item number two is a conditional use request from Dusty Vincent, as discussed in the public hearing.
Motion to deny. And just want to clarify with the comment, it's, my motion to deny is not based on who's for it or who's against it. It's looking at our current zoning. And I just believe that this request, in it, in it being unique, it, it just, I'm not saying that conditional use skates the issue, but it goes around the zoning. It would, it would create commercial zoning on that property in a residential area. So I just want to make sure you all understand my perspective and my, my reason for voting no. So.
There's a motion to deny on the floor. Is there a second? There's a second, any board discussion?
I would ask the board to consider a temporary allowance because there is a business involved. So even if we do not want to allow that to be a permanent usage, we allow the business reasonable time to find an. reasonable time to find an alternate location and be able to relocate their business.
So your proposal would be a denial, but with a window of opportunity to permit them to relocate.
Well, it would be...
Or a temporary approval.
A temporary approval to allow them that time. Because the way I interpret the motion currently is, would be an outright denial. As of tomorrow, not allowed. My thought process is, because there is a business involved, to allow them a reasonable amount of time in order to relocate those vehicles to an alternate property, whether that be their main facility or one that is appropriately zoned and has a permitting, but to allow them that ability to do that. That would be my, you know, request for the board to consider.
Is there any additional discussion on the item? I don't think... I think we would have to vote on the motion on the floor and see if it fails or passes, and then we could revisit the issue. Correct. So there... Yes, ma'am. So there is a motion in a second. If there's no further discussion on that item, all those in favor of a straight denial, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Aye. All right, so that fails. Is there another motion from the board?
I would make a motion for temporary approval for the conditional use for 12 months, which would, from the end of August, August 31st of '26.
So Debbie, did you hear that motion?
Follow me now, sorry.
Here's a Pied Piper.
If I could hear it, it was a motion temporary conditional use for a reasonable time.
For 12 months. Yes, ma'am. So that is the motion in a second. And board discussion on that item?
For me, Chris May.
Any discussion from you, Debbie, or Chris?
No, I'm good.
Okay. I'm gonna throw a wrench into it. I would like to see it a lesser, like, six months and for us to come back and revisit the item. And it can always, you know, we can always take some other movement at that time. Is that not incorrect, Mr. Hamilton?
Yeah, that's accurate.
I would like to revisit it in six months, see where we're at, see how the process is going, you know, how things are moving, how the relocation is doing, and then determine how we move from there.
Are you doing that based on the Planning Commission's recommendation?
So I will call for... We've got a motion in a second on this item for 12 months to not confuse the issue.
I will amend my motion
Thank you.
to reduce that time to the six months.
Second, the amended motion.
Thank you. So there is amended motion for, to temporarily permit it for six months and then revisit the issue. And there is a second on that. Is there any further discussion by the board? All those in favor of that motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. And those opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. So that is four to one. That motion carries.
Okay. Thank you. Item number three is a variance request from Richard Abbott as discussed in the public hearing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in a second to approve. Any discussion by the board? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It'll be a four to one vote. It's approved.
Item number four is a variance request from Karen Holcomb as discussed in the public hearing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, two seconds. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chris, you are a four. Sorry, there's just a little drag, so I'm trying to make sure we get everything down for the minutes. All right, number five?
Item number five, rezoning request from Verbena Roots Properties as discussed in the public hearing.
You have a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Item number six is a conditional use request from Champion Legacy Resources LLC as discussed in the public hearing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right. We will move into... We've got a number seven. That concludes all of our land use public hearing items.
Item number seven, a board to consider motion to approve the corrected factual adjustments and errors and refunds to the applicable tax digest during the 2025 fiscal year and authorize chairman to sign adjustment sheet, excuse me. This is an annual housekeeping item. We handle it every year, just cleans up the tax rolls. So we ask for your approval and we'll forward this on to Tax Commissioner Denux.
Motion to approve item seven.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any board discussion? If not, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number eight, a board to consider motion to grant extension to camper permit for property located at 446 Mountain View Circle, T13061. The property owner's camper permit expired on July 4th of this year. She is in the process of placing a manufactured home on the property and has requested a couple month extension.
Motion to grant.
Second.
Motion in a second to grant the extension. Any board discussion? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And then we'll move to invoices and quotes over 10,000.
We've got five for your consideration today. The first is from Flock Safety in the amount of 36,000. This is the additional year of support for our Flock Safety cameras, funds our budget in the Stevens County Sheriff's Office budget. Item number two is from Osage in the amount of $411,000. This is for a new ambulance as requested by the EMS Director Brian Bennett. This would be purchased for the future out of SPOST 8. We are going ahead and locking in this quote now to keep the pricing. And for some reason, we decided not to purchase the ambulance. We would be able to back out before it went into production. This just secures the current and existing pricing for the ambulance. Item number three is from James Short in the amount of $47,854. This is for a tractor, a loader, and a cutter for the Stevens County landfill and the continued EPD required maintenance up there. Item number four is from Acryol Company in the amount of $13,839.77. This is a regular gasoline drought for which funds were budgeted. And the last item is from Reynolds Warren Equipment Company in the amount of $230,000. This is for two boom mowers for the Stevens County Road Department. Funds are budgeted in SPOST 7.
Do you want to speak to the additional item number five? Or you want Jason to?
Jason, would you kind of give us an overview on those? Folks at home can't hear you if you can come up to the... Jason on the spot.
But it has reached the end of its service life and we reached out to get a quote on a new one and it started out at 291,000. So we eliminated some options on that and got it down to 270. But while I was at my conference, we went to an equipment show. Told me, the guy from Reynolds Warren said, "We have some used ones you might want to look at." Lake City and looked at them and they looked basically brand new. They've been rented out to the state. And Reynolds Warren's been keeping up with the maintenance on them because they own them. So they're in really good shape. So if we can get the price of the one, then we can cover more.
They're getting too gently used for...
Slightly used boom mowers.
Which aligns with the perspective that this board has had. The vehicles that we've been purchasing have been slightly used and not new. So appreciate your efforts in aligning with that.
Typically, you're only going to get about five or six years out of it before you got to replace it. And once we wear the booms out, we can put a bush hog behind it and cut grass till the tractor quits, so...
Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate you finding this.
Any questions from the Commissioners on the invoices and quotes?
Time to pay the bills.
Okay. Is that a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion in two seconds? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Do you have any administrative or financial reports?
Yes, ma'am. We do have our fiscal year '25 fourth quarter financial report available for you from Finance Director James Alrod.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christian. You stated this numbers are for fourth quarter ending, 6:30. We'll all state that this is pre-audit, non-budget, excuse me, non-audited numbers. Total general fund revenues for the year were 5% above projection. Total revenue was $23.2 million in the general fund. Of the $17 million of that was from taxes, that 74%. And of course, that does include 3.4 million from sales tax that we vote on again this coming November. Of the total 23 million, we've got $1 million from the city to co-op for paving projects we did last summer.
Hold on just a second. Okay, you're back.
Welcome back, Debbie. So we got money from the city for paving projects. We'll state that building permits for the current year is $193,000, which was $60,000 over what I budgeted. Of course, with the previous prior years and presidential elections and everything else going on in the world and the economy, who knows what's going to happen with the... I didn't know what was going to happen last year as far as that goes. But it does show the continued growth that the county is experiencing right now, which is always a positive.
Proceed.
I do have a graph here to show you kind of a breakdown of the revenues for the year. Again, the taxes itself, which is property taxes, vehicle tag taxes, and of course, sales taxes, almost 74% of our total revenue. The insurance premium that I mentioned earlier, which is over $1 million, is 6% of the total revenue. And charges for services, that includes the permitting and different avenues and that makes us 9% of the total revenue there. I'm sorry, permits is licenses and permits, 1%. Funds and purportures, which comes from the Sheriff's Office and the court system, is at 2%. So doesn't seem like a lot of money, but it all adds up to the total revenue that we need to operate the county on a yearly basis. For expenditures, as of now, this is before any of accruals and end of year budget amendments. The general fund is 2.5% or over $500,000 over budget. If needed, this will be consumed by the revenue overages from the growing economy I previously mentioned. We knew some of this was coming into effect with some change in the hands of different departments over the past year. The other departments, the only handful of departments that are over budget, data processing is actually 50% over... Sorry.
Sam, go to the other page.
Not the detail? Do you have a detail? No? Okay, sorry. I thought I had a breakdown. It's in the packet, I believe. Sorry. And this is available for me if you may need it in the audience or online via email, let me know. Data processing is 50% over due to additional costs from storm damage, additional contract getting to jail, and of course, adding new employees and new systems throughout the year. Human resources is $7,000 over budget. This is due to unbudgeted, unexpected legal fees. Building grounds is 9% over due to vehicle and building repair maintenance. The Sheriff's Office is 18% over budgeted. Mostly this is due to prepaid items, vacation payouts, and overtime. Again, a budget adjustment will correct this once all invoices are ended at the end of the year. We will also say that Building Inspection Department is now $53,000 over budget. This is due to increased growth resulting in additional safety costs and that wasn't budgeted. Again, budget done spring of '24. We had a full-time inspector that didn't make it for the full year, so that had affected the budget and that ran. All this being said... The expenditure departments, all of them together, all the general fund departments, 48% of the $23 million or whatever is due to personnel benefits, payroll, insurance, that type of thing. Contracted services is 14%. And then also, we have supply costs is at 10%. Supplies is anything from papers and pencils to everything else you need to operate the government. It's $2.4 million. That seems like a lot, but we have a lot of buildings, a lot of personnel, a lot of things going on that constitutes those supplies. Moving right along to the AWPR fund. It is now closed with all funds being allocated for the year and spent. SPOST 7, which is now, only has 11 months remaining on it. Taxes from it was at 99% that was budgeted, and this is yet with one month still to accrue. You pay taxes or you buy things in June, the state gets it in July, and we get the check in August. It's just the way it is. So with one more yet month to accrue for the SPOST money, so we'll be over budget and revenue for the SPOST fund. Capital Project Fund finished at 92% under budget, or 8% under budget, I should say. And this is due to some of the projects being under budget or some of them moved to this current year, FY '26. Solid Waste Fund is now at 64% of budget, as noted in previous quarterly assessments. There's a time lag in the billing from the engineers for the post-closure costs at the landfill. And even with this time lag, I do feel like the Solid Waste Fund will be under budget as well once all invoices are entered. 911 Fund is 98.5% with almost 60% of all revenue operates the 911 Fund coming from transfers from the general fund. I'll state that because there's current things out there, legislation maybe in the State House that's going to try to adjust those dollar figures that we pay each month on the phone bills, both landlines and cellphones. So just let that know that 60% of property taxes funds 911. 911 Fund, I just said that. Overall, the county performed well in FY '25. As we continue on to FY '26 and we start the audit process, again, it's never-ending in my department. I will get, hands down, to both Kristen and Marie, both been here a year and a half each, or a year and a year and a half. They're doing well. Catching right along. We're moving right along with a new assistant, Tyler. Today was our first payroll we've done today, which is 95%, 100% in Tyler time wise ago. It's various, anything time has changed, especially when it comes to technology and software, there's always a learning curve and working through those. And we'll also give, hands down, to Courtney Pickens, who's not in attendance tonight, but she, over the past several years or whatever, she has now completed her Carvinson Institute Certificate Finance Officer II. So she'll be up here next month doing her presentation, not me. Any other questions on the fourth quarter financial reports, or anything as far as end of year budget amendments, anything on that goes?
Nope.
Thank you all.
Thank you, James. Any other... Do you have a report for me?
No, ma'am.
Any department reports?
No, ma'am.
Any reports from our Commissioners? Commissioners that are not here with us? Do you have any reports? Thank you. Okay. In that case, I think we have two matters from citizens. Is that correct? Okay. I'm sorry? Yes, ma'am. It will be here.
That's supposed to say the 28th. Apologies. There's a number missing from there. That should say July 28th, not... That should say July 28th, not July 2nd.
So, the top one's a typo. I'm first. Okay, Mr. Payne?
Steve Payne, I reside at 1985 Highway 184 North. Born and raised Stevens County in 1954. Low, losing all my hair. Proud of Dakota, proud of Stevens County. Pop was Clarence Payne, ran Payne's alignment right down here on Broad Street Bypass for many, many years. Mom here, Ann Payne. Loved me and raised me and sent me up here and made me sit through Coral Creek Baptist Church. Growing up. Back now, I don't attend there regularly. Proud of Coral Creek Baptist Church. Been for them folks praying for me when I was in college, I probably wouldn't have made it through college. I did and I thank them, some of them I still know in this area. Mainly, my main purpose to come in front of you folks tonight, I've already, through some recent things that I've been working through with a couple of the folks I see here this evening. Found it to be an incredible challenge. And coming back to Dakota, you know, I'm proud of this place. I mean, I'm a purple hurricane. Probably haven't even heard of purple hurricanes. Some of us remember those days. I was the first graduating class and became an Indian in 1972. So, I'm a hur- Indian hurricane, I guess. Born in a little hospital, it's now an annex for the health department or something, okay? So, roots run deep. A lot of Ken folks, unfortunately, mom and dad are no longer with us. Unfortunately, my brother, who is eight years younger, my sister, who is four years older, I lost both of them. So, we don't have them. And the little joke in my family is, well, if we can get rid of this pain, then the county will be painless. Not sure that'll solve all you folks' problems or challenges, but anyway. But, you know, when I left, I left in '72. People are going to probably throw something at me in a minute because I went to Georgia Tech. Spent four years there, graduated in '76. Left there, went to the Air Force, spent a career in the Air Force. Went in thinking, oh, I'll go in three years and get out. You know, dad was trying to get me out of the house, you know, son, you ain't coming back after college. Went in and, you know, there I was retiring. Amazing, great career. Engineer out of tech. Halfway into my career in the Air Force, I applied for a program called AFIT. I selected to go to one of the universities of my choice. And since I'm such a Georgia fan, I picked University of Florida, of course. Master's at University of Florida in environmental engineering. Spent a career basically being an engineer, utility type guy in the Air Force. Retired from the Air Force. Palt Junior, OTC, that's a great career. I still got 10 minutes.
No, sir, it's limited to three, it just went off. So, I just want to make sure we address your concerns tonight.
Well, and honestly tonight, I want you all to know who this citizen in your community is that's trying to work on some of these issues. I try to read your ordinances, I try to read your codes, I listen to these fellows, I ask for their interpretation. We don't always agree, but I think that's the process, okay? But I wanted you to see me and understand. I'm not an uneducated person, this is difficult for me. I'm not an uneducated person. I can only imagine, as I sit and listen to a lot of your other citizens in this community, how difficult this process has to be, how frustrating. So, mainly tonight, I wanted to introduce myself, I'm sorry I've rambled. I do have a reason for being here. I'd like to say stay tuned for part two and probably part three. Because part two will probably specifically inform my reason for trying to get to know each other and work through this process. I've worked with Christian, we met, we've come up with an action plan. But, so I think part two, next meeting I'll get on your agenda again and try to explain through that. I will say, let me say real quick about that. There... One version, there's no documentation. But I'll offer to you as a council member, there is now currently documentation, it's available. Some of you may have already seen it. Haven't seen it because it was not approved yet. I have had that documented in a police information report. I can give you the case number if you so desire. So, that will be public record, it's available at the jail. And I was, it was done, but not, hadn't been through review and approved. But should be available, that report should be available tomorrow or Thursday. So, we'll be back and we'll talk about that next time. Once we talk through that, what I hope to do is come back the third time and be able to have become educated and as resolved and move forward with what we're trying to move forward through. And when you read the information report, you'll understand what precipitated this. Documented and documented. Serious documentation for why I wanted some of your time. I appreciate what you do. I didn't get to tell you that the last 14 years of my life, I was at Brownston as a city engineer, sitting right next to this fellow's contemporary. Going to a lot of these meetings on both sides. A lot of these people I hear, and I know a number of you folks, we're on both sides a lot of times. Investors, as builders, we're on this side. If my professional, like to find a job, I'd be sitting over there. By the planning director or by the mayor. I know, you know, both sides and I appreciate both sides. I'd like to help and volunteer my time. I've told a number of people, like to be on the planning board, put me on the land use ordinance revisions, review. Because I could sit here and enumerate, I got a whole little pad. Christian's tired of me sending him the questions. But, you know, I mean, that's the way we work through these things.
Yes, sir.
I try not to have an opinion about it. Do I state my opinion to others off the record? Of course I do, we all do. But personally, I know there's a process and I'm much, I'm very willing to try to help simplify the code. Government in my world, less, not more. That's my feeling about how we ought to govern our community. Appreciate your time and I'm sure we'll be meeting each other a little bit more and talking through this more because we still got some issues. Christian and I still got some things to work out, we'll get there, I know we will, we're closer than we were. Well, I ain't there yet, Christian, but I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Payne.
Thank you.
Ms. Cohen, we're ready for you. Can we reset that? Three minutes? Yes ma'am.
I'm Susan Cohen of the, and I'm of the, I'm of the Dakota Colliers. And the amount on my taxes is going to be a really hardship for me. My washer broke down, my car got run over. My, I lost my phone and I haven't been able to get the new one to activate. And then just everything all at once is going wrong and I'm a poverty case. They reduced my social security by $370, which I can't afford and I don't know why. And I'm still trying to find out why. Must be something to do with my paperwork, I guess. And I'm a poverty case and I need a chance to get over this hump. And any questions?
No ma'am, while I identify with your concerns, there is a process if you want to address your valuation, it's not with us.
Okay, but I understand that this is a general tax increase for all the homeowners. And I, they, I don't know that they can afford it any more than I can.
Yes ma'am.
Any concerns with the valuation on property would be directed to the Board of Assessors. The Board of Commissioners determines the millage rate, they've got three public hearings scheduled. One 8:30 AM on July 28th, 6:00 PM on the same date. And then on Monday, August 4th at 6:00 PM, following from which, they will actually vote on the millage rate. The goal of the Board of Commissioners this year is to actually reduce the overall tax rate for the county.
And it has been, our proposal is a reduction.
The MNO is scheduled to stay the same, which is why the Board of Commissioners is having to advertise a tax increase. State law requires if you keep the MNO the same, you advertise a tax increase. However, we will be going down on the special districts this year, which will have a net effect of lowering the overall millage rate this year.
Yeah, of course.
Just to add clarity to the situation, because it is overly complex, is the county will be using last year's valuations on the tax. So, those that have seen a large increase in valuations, the county is not, because of House Bill 581, we did exactly what the voters of Stevens County requested. And we will be utilizing last year's valuations with a reduced net millage rate.
If it's a homestead.
For homesteaded property, sorry.
Sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
Disclaimer.
For homesteaded properties, which for a primary residence, if you have gone through that application process and achieved that, that, that will assist. And I understand it is challenging, but that is one of the reasons we stayed, we as a board decided to stay in that House Bill 581 as the voters wanted, was to try to provide that at least piece of relief. While it's not as encompassing as, you know, we would all like, it is a step in the right direction, we thought.
It looked like it was about twice as much as last time.
Are you talking about the value of your home or your taxes in general?
My taxes. That were sent to me to inform me that this will be my taxes this year.
Okay, did you look at the valuation? Did the valuation of your home change significantly?
No, it...
I think it did. And I'm seeing nods from my assistants over here. They probably just looked up your parcel and I think there was probably a significant jump in value. Your home is now worth more.
Yeah. We, and we can, we can get you in contact with the right process to work through this with you. We'll, and that way, we'll see if it, what all does and doesn't. Because it is, it's complex. But we'll, I'll speak with you afterwards and we'll see if we can figure it out.
Yeah, my house is probably worth less.
We'll take a look and see.
We're happy to talk to you after and we can help direct...
Who do I talk to?
Yeah.
If you'll just hang out.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be right over there.
Once we conclude the meeting, we'll be right over there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you ma'am.
Is there any other business?
No ma'am.
Mr. Tucker, do you have a young man with you this evening? I was. Yes, sir. Hello, James.
Good afternoon.
This is Chuck in Prague.
It's good to meet you. Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I did. That's right. Yes, sir. Bought some doughnuts from him. I did, they were good, thank you.
Absolutely. That's awesome. Thank you, Mr. Tucker.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.